It's 5:30, so let's call the meeting in order.
All right.
First up is the community survey draft.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the council identified conducting a community survey as an initiative within the strategic plan during 2019. Peter Leatherman, who just joined us, with the Boris Leatherman Group, presented and answered questions for the council regarding community surveys in general. It's a bit of a proposal, which is in your packet. Also in your packet tonight is a draft survey. The city council had a budget of $15,000 for the 2020 budget to conduct the community survey. The survey, as you see in your packet, would cost $19,000. So tonight, with Peter's help, we'll be looking at question type to review for the draft, look at the number of questions, and then at some point get some direction from the council on project budget if you are fine with the $19,000 and we can make a budget amendment, or if you want to drop it to $15,000. But before we get to the budget piece, I thought it'd be appropriate first to go over the question types and any general feedback you had for Mr. Leatherman.
Do you by the chance have a paper copy of it? I left it sitting on my printer at the office. Could you please thank yourself last time?
You can turn this question over.
Yeah, he's printing three.
That's a $4,000 piece of paper.
Let me.
Question number seven.
Yeah.
So maybe just high level?
Absolutely. Why don't we do high level feedback?
So I've got to admit, I took a constructive look at this with trying to just whittle down a little bit the number of questions. There was a section in here, "I don't want to ask questions where the answers can't affect change." So, "Do you think our water is too high?" Yes, I do. There's very little that we can do, especially with needing a new water treatment facility to bring down the cost of water. So I don't know that that's a prudent use of our questions. If folks can't feel heard, or if we can't use that information.
That's a critical piece when you're reviewing all the questions, because there are thousands of interesting questions. But is there something actionable that you can do one way or the other? You know, in talking, Brett, to set the survey up and the draft and everything, you know, talks about the water treatment plan. You know, do you ask a question about the use of city funding? Well, if you're already going to do it, there's no point in asking at that point in time. So I mean, that's a great way to look through a lens on, is it actionable? Is it useful information? You know, and sometimes a council or a school board will say, "Well, you know what? I just want to know." You know, "We want to know what the perception is out there." You know, especially on property taxes, they use that as an opportunity. You know, I always think, there was a city in the west side here where it was like 75% thought their property taxes were very high or somewhat high. It actually turned out on the scale that they were in the bottom five. So it was, that became the communication opportunity for them. And they went out and talked to the community as a whole. So I mean, there is something actionable there, but I think as a whole, it's a great way to review the draft and look at the questions.
Okay. So I wonder if the best way to go through this is just go page by page and we all...
Yep, I'm making feedback.
I don't have anything for the first page, so maybe there.
Question six.
That's not the first page?
This page one. It has...
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Agitation.
Why do you feel things? I don't want...
Oh, why do you think? Yeah.
Or why do you believe?
Yeah.
I want subjective answers.
Sure.
Instead of emotional.
And it was "think" in the question anyway?
Good catch.
Yep.
Okay. Are you there?
Yep.
You go down to the first page?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Second page. I didn't like question seven. I'm not sure, to be honest, why we care, where folks identify.
Some cities are interested in that because they wanted to know the level of connection to the city as a whole versus the balkanization of the metro area, where people identify more with their neighborhood than they do the city as a whole. So, and if it's not useful...
I don't think it's useful.
I think question eight is more useful.
Eight is the...
Yeah, why would you rank the strength of community identity and neighborliness in Carver?
That's something we want to know.
Yep.
Yeah. I also had, I also didn't like question...
She's not. She's not. Okay.
Everybody's yours. I also didn't like question nine, how they see Carver. Again, because I don't know what we'll do with that information.
I actually like, okay, so I kind of like that one because I think that that starts to see if there's been a shift of perception with all the new residents coming to town, where we all, who have maybe been here for a long time, have a different perception than people who have just moved in. I certainly feel like it's a small town, but somewhere else who just moved here may feel it's a suburb. If no one else agrees, I'm not stuck on that, but I kind of want to see a little perception change.
Okay.
Do, just going back to seven, do we agree with striking that one?
Yes.
Okay.
I prefer keeping eight.
Yes.
Okay. Keep it eight and keep nine. I'll keep moving down.
Yep, keep going.
Um, thirteen. Storm water runoff control. I feel like folks aren't going to know what we're asking, actually because I'm not sure what we're asking.
I feel like we've seen plenty of people complain about water runoff in their properties.
You think they'll know what that is and say...
I liked the way it was said, because I thought about it and I said, "Well, how would I answer it?" Right? Storm water runoff control, and I would think, do I have water running off from developments adjacent? Do I feel like I have storm water control issues in my property?
This is your commission experience.
I know, but I guess I've heard...
Okay.
Multiple complaints from property owners.
Do you think there's a different wording that might be more clear for someone who may be...
Maybe.
Because in the know as we are?
Sure. I don't know a better way to say it. I think it's, you see storm water management, that doesn't help. It's runoff or... I don't know. I don't seem to have an answer for that.
Yeah, I mean, not all cities ask this question, I think. Brett, you mentioned that you'd had some issues on storm water runoff. And so that's why we added it in here. When cities have asked about it, that's the phrasing that's been used, is storm water runoff.
Could you do MS4 reporting?
Why really? Other people will hang up and say, "Thanks, Brian."
What?
I'm fourteen.
Drainage? Storm water drainage?
Storm water runoff or drainage?
Drainage might be drainage and runoff.
Yeah. Does it have storm water? Could it be drainage and runoff issues?
Maybe it's the control part that I...
Storm water runoff and drainage?
I like that.
Storm water runoff and drainage?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, that was thirteen. Going back to twelve, reliability of city water. Do we want to say quality instead? Because every time I turn on my...
We ask later.
We ask later about quality.
We do.
But we have the specific session on city water.
Okay. Then I would maybe push back on, it just, we've never had reli...
Yeah, I don't think that reliability, if we're going to really address it in another spot, is it maybe necessary right here?
So reliability of city water.
It's always there.
To me, that's...
It hasn't been always there. I mean, Grant and I have lived here 20 years. I lost water for four days over Fourth of July weekend because of a storm. It took out a pipe in the development of the block.
Do you have concerns about the reliability of water?
No, because I know Brian now.
Then I'd be concerned.
I don't, but also I think as we're thinking about the timing of a water treatment plant, the timing is around peak, right? Can we meet peak? Or do we have to tell people? Sorry.
But that's not how they're going to answer this. They're not going to know, I mean...
They're not going to know about that.
The previous, they're judging the past and that's expectations for the future.
So if we say quality, everybody's going to say poor.
Right. But what if we take the... Okay, so here's the thing. If this one comes out, we're trying to manage our number of questions, too. There's one that, when we're talking about park maintenance and parking facilities, we have the agreement with Chaska, and I guess I'm not seeing that here, so do we...
Hi, I saw it. Hold on. There's a section later that I really like.
Really, the park maintenance section later on?
Okay.
Well, the long-term infrastructure projects and services, but as you bring this up, there's a thing about a community center or continued public transportation service. This is thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine?
No, there's another section.
Is there another about...
Yeah.
The connection with...
I don't remember one.
Should we just... Okay.
Sure.
We can, so let's just mark that one.
Let's play through that one.
Yes, no, I'm with you. Let's ask about that.
Put that on the parking lot.
Let's put it on the parking lot.
Okay.
Are we taking out reliability or keeping it?
Put a question mark there.
Maybe.
All right.
Okay, let's parking lot that one.
Okay.
Feedback on page two.
That is what twelve we're talking about.
I like this list of city services. I like the definition that we're making here of what is a city service. You know, does schools start in there, right, and things like that? And I think this is going to be a nice benchmark where we can measure ourselves in the future against, which are the things I wanted to get out of this survey. So, just stating that.
Fill in the blanks in the county roads. Eleven and forty. Eleven and forty?
Yes. Maybe put JCP by eleven, so that I would...
So it's Johnson-Carver partway.
Johnson-Carver partway, okay.
Yeah.
For twenty-three, you just want to put, "Do you believe the quality of city services has been able to..." Are we on the previous page or are we on...
Oh, we're getting there.
Twenty-three.
We can be there now.
Yeah, we can go there.
"Do you believe?" is how you want to change it instead of "feel"? Okay.
I want feelings in this.
No feelings. There's already going to be a lot of feelings in this.
I have a feeling.
Uh-huh. My page three is questions twenty-three through twenty-nine?
Yes, yes. Question twenty-seven. I had in there, I wonder if it doesn't need more detail. City services like X, Y, and Z.
I know, I struggled with this exactly, too. I thought this was too generic of a question, and I think, I would like to see us instead inquire around priority of services or amenities, which we kind of do in that thirty-seven through thirty-nine, right? Long-term infrastructure projects and services. I don't know.
So twenty-seven, the thing is, and that's why we followed with twenty-eight. So if they favor it, what type of services would you want to see improved and enhanced? Because if you do a such as, you can't do an exhaustive such as. You're going to have to pick two or three.
See up something.
And so if that doesn't tickle the respondent's fancy, they might say they oppose it, as opposed to, "Okay, yeah, I would." So say you say streets, police, and utility billing, and they want a more park, they want a community center, park and recreation facility, stuff like that, they're going to be really reactive to what the list is. So that's why we tend to keep it generic. And then if they favor something, they can tell us what sort of service they would like to see enhanced.
So is that maybe getting at, you know, questions ten through twenty about the city services, is it maybe helping us see priority of where residents would be willing to pay more for better?
No, it won't do that.
It won't do that.
No. Going back to the recession, ten years ago, cities had us do, so this city service list...
Yeah.
That we have, ten through twenty-two?
Yeah.
We asked it twice. We asked how the city was doing currently, and then we said, "In the times of difficult budget decisions, would you support an increase of funding for this service? The funding should be maintained at the current level, or should the service be eliminated or reduced?" And so that became, but about six, seven years ago, cities said, "We don't need to do those prioritizations anymore coming out of the recession." So we just tend to focus on what the current services are. You'll know what the core opposition of taxes, the key is twenty-five, where are they willing to support a property tax and increase to maintain the city services at their current level? So that will say, okay, if they favor a property tax increase for this, this is going to say everything's good. If they oppose it, then we can say, "What city services would you be willing to see cut?" That would give them an opportunity. So it's not going to...
Kind of get it through them, yeah.
You're going to get it around, but it's not going to be direct, service by service.
Okay. That's fair.
Okay. Moving on to twenty-nine, I just noted that one because I feel like those dollar amounts are a little wonky, you know? Like, I know it's testing the threshold for what's reasonable and the respondents mine and what isn't, but it seems like that's not a frame in which we work. This would be a $10 increase on taxes.
We could switch it. I mean, some cities say by year, some say per month.
But we don't even talk in that framework. I mean, I had the same struggle with this question. I was thinking, well, what do we get out of knowing this? Pain threshold? I don't know what we'd do with it, is what I'm saying.
It will tell you those who support a property tax to enhance, what's the median level they're willing to see their property taxes enhance. So if you have 40% saying, "I support an increase in the property taxes to enhance services," and the median is 20 bucks a year, it's not really that great of an enhancement that they're looking for. Do you know what I mean?
But it's everybody at 20 bucks. Now it's a different...
Now it's a different, now it's a different amount.
Okay. If nobody else feels strongly about that one, I can...
Do we like the numbers in there?
Do I think... Well, there's an instruction in here, say, "Choose a random starting point." Does this let them sort of just give you a number? Like, what if I say 35?
No, no, this is, that's the instruction to the former.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so the former, every former will start, one will start at 20, then they'll start at 40 the next time, and then they move up or down depending on the response. So there's no positional bias. So you're not starting everybody at the same. And then where they cut it off is the amount. So if I say, "How about $40 a month or $40 a year", you say, "Yeah, how about $60 a year?" No, not that high. The answer is 40.
Why don't we say per month?
Because that would be interesting feedback, just kind of based on where we've been with franchise fees and can kind of...
I guess we should go over to per month, and what do you want at the top end, then I'll set the scale.
I do, but since the franchise fees aren't going forward, I mean, we don't think necessarily on a monthly basis outside of that, so...
Yeah, and it's property taxes, which is, I feel like an annual expense or framed as an annual expense.
I realize it's not, I mean, everyone with your valuation is going to be different. But I don't dislike the question, because like you said, I think, even though it's...
It's a pain point.
Yeah, the pain threshold.
Yeah.
I wouldn't change it to monthly.
Keep it at annual?
Keep it at annual.
Okay.
Because after the franchise fees went down, it was $8 a month, realistically, eight to 13 a month. Whereas if you say, that's 100, what, 170 is what we came up with for the upper side of it. So if you keep it annually, it gives a little bit more, a little bit less pain.
Okay. Page three, moving on to page four?
Yeah.
That question thirty was interesting.
My fault.
But I don't know what we would do with that.
Yeah. I can hear it. And I, it's more of an education.
I think we know.
And there's nothing wrong with an education, because a lot of times...
But we're not going to tell them the right answer, are we?
Yeah, we do after thirty-two.
Oh, we do after, okay.
We do, but I feel like it's a little, like...
I think we can put a pie chart out and have people see it better than going through and say, "Oh, we take a guess. What do you think?" You know?
Yeah.
But I think it's a wasted question if we're looking at our questions.
Yeah.
I think it comes off as like, nobody's going to know that amount, and it's going to be like, "I'm smarter than you," you know, in a way. I just, I don't...
It give, it will give context for thirty-one on their perception. So if they think over 40% are going, it gives context to thirty-one. If you're not, because there's an education piece, and understand with thirty. If you don't want to do thirty, you know, because it is an interesting question, provide some context to thirty-one, then I would follow up and ask thirty-three, because what we're trying to see is the impact. So, because we're giving them then that piece of information, then asking if it changes their value basis. So if I thought that half my taxes go to the city of Carver, and I don't know, we need to fill in that blank on the percent, if it's 25%, okay, now that you know that 25% is going to the city of Carver as opposed to 50%, do you think you can get a better value or not for the taxes?
Rather than being me back...
One tricky semantics, though, why don't we tell them what it is and then...
Because we want to test perception first.
I, yep.
Because perception is what, because people don't know, but perception drives reality, especially on property taxes.
Actually, you won my back with that explanation. So I think that's interesting.
I like how you explain that.
Yep. Anybody else on page four?
There's the quality of...
Quality of city drinking waters, thirty-four, thirty-five.
I like the why question.
Oh, that's always fascinating for my foreigners. You get everything from taste to things, floating, colors, all sorts of vivid descriptions of the city water drinking water.
I agree with your dissertation.
All right. Page five is where I struck you...
Oh, here's a water rates question, thirty-six.
Yes. So I struck that question because again, we know they're high. Tell me your water rates are high, there's nothing we can do about it. Thoughts?
I'd rather hear about quality, too. I like the quality question. I think that's important to think about, but cost?
I just don't want to ask questions if the answers can't.
Yeah. We can't do anything with them.
Right. Well, I used to live in Chaska back in the day, but I don't actually remember what my water bill would have been compared to this, though I have, I mean, just...
I mean, you're counting...
You're the minority, because I feel like everybody who used to live in Chaska knows the pain. Moving...
I'd rather spend more time on thirty-seven through thirty-nine.
Yeah, so thirty-seven through thirty-nine, I see an opportunity to ask a question about levy improvements.
Thank you, yes.
So we have an insufficient river levy, and would potentially, are looking into making improvements to it, which would bring all kinds of benefits to the downtown area and Carver as a whole. I don't know how we frame that question, but I would like to see a levy.
Levy improvements along the river?
Certified levies.
Certi... Yeah, certified, yeah, let's call it that.
What does that mean?
Flooded.
It's not a sandbag wall or...
It's certified means that it's FEMA approved, so you can put that to FEMA. FEMA certified flood levy.
FEMA approved, so levy improvements along the river that are approved by FEMA?
Yes.
I like that. That's why he's better at this.
He is, yeah.
Not that I'm not that smart, but I heard certified levy improvement, no idea, so...
I didn't like the community center question. Again, we might get 100% folks who want to do it. That's not something we're doing in the next 10 or even 20 years.
Is it in the parks plan?
No.
Nope.
Is that a spot for the recreation partnership question?
Actually, what number question are we on?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Well, I thought we had, I thought we said we had questions about the...
About what?
The recreation part.
Oh, that's like, yeah.
Sixty-three-ish. On page seven.
Oh, okay.
Yes, question sixty it starts with. Have you participated in recreation programs from the city of Chaska?
Okay. But we're not really talking about the partnership.
Can I ask a question to the council? So we're looking at this for a sixty-question survey, it's fourteen, right? And so we budgeted 15,000. This one that we're looking at right here is a $19,000 cost. Is it our intent to look to adding that additional cost in, or are we cutting out questions now so that we can get back down to that sixty to seventy range?
I looked at it with a critical eye to try to cut some questions. I didn't cut enough to get us down to 50. And I'm not necessarily opposed to going over the 15, because I think some of these questions, as we're learning through the conversation, one needs two, needs three, and they build off of each other.
Sure. So I like the exercise of going through these, but I think we have, I mean, how, if we go through it now and say, "Oh, we like 75 of these," I mean, we have a decision to make that we're going to decide to go over, and I don't know that that decision's been made. So I'm just thinking, what's the best move as we go forward with looking at all of this? Do we decide, "Okay," because if we're willing to go that extra route? Or do you want, just want to simply go through questions right now? Because I don't know that I'm willing to go to the 19,000 for this, because we're budgeting over. I'm not saying I'm not, but since we had a budget in one number and we're looking at more, I think that's a decision we need to make. No.
Yeah. I get where you're coming from. I think, kind of through this process, in my mind, we go through the process and we cut questions, and then we kind of figure out where we're at and then see, do we want to cut the section on what kind of housing we want to see?
Okay.
You know, where we want to get to.
So you want to go through first and go through the questions, so we have, understand what they allow.
Yeah, understand the value of that.
And then we can go back and see where we might want to cut them out?
And I could give you an approximation, not going to keep the track of cuts and additions. So I can see what we net out after we go through it.
Yeah. Okay. But I'm not necessarily opposed of going above 15, knowing that we have some options for the funding.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to add levy. Are we going to take out community center? It's not in the plans.
Then...
Replace it with levy?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that. Those are the more near-term.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, questions forty and forty-one, I have struck because it's another question where we just finished a comprehensive plan. Folks seen the development. I think we're in a good place with development and planning, so I don't know that if folks say that it's horrible and we're not living up to their expectations, that we can really do much on.
So with forty, you said forty and forty-one, right?
Yep.
So with forty-one, so if you think the pace of development to the city has been about right to ramp that up, how, I mean, how do we stop it? I mean, right, you asked this question, but the developer buys it, and they come through with the plan that fits, and it's in the comp plan, and they...
Yeah, I'm not sure what we do.
Well, I know that's a reaction from people. This will be a very strong reaction. You'll hear some things. I don't know how we say, "Well, oh, it's too fast? Okay, then we're going to stop it all now." I mean, nobody else can buy land here.
Right, right. And that's the thing, and that's why I don't like the questions that we can't take that feedback and go, "Huh, we didn't know that. We're going to go this direction now."
Right. I'm all for having forty-one out. Forty, I think, seems interesting to me, because if it can lead into forty-two, you're saying, "Are they well-planned?" And maybe it becomes one question. Are there types of elements you would like to see in the city? I think that is a very interesting one to me. So do we take forty-one out and lead from forty to forty-two?
I'm fine with that.
Say that one more time.
So take out forty-one, yeah, and so forty, and then forty-two.
Forty-two, forty-three.
Okay, got it. I'm there. Moving on, any other, page five?
Here's a question. Let's go back to the, if we take out, if we just leave forty-two in, what's more relevant, asking people what they want to see, or asking people what they don't want to see?
Forty-two and forty-three.
I get that. Which one's more relevant to you? Why ask both?
I would like to, I'd like forty-two, because I think, who knows? Who knows what you might hear back on that one that, even though Aaron's brilliant, might not have thought of it.
The answers, will the respondents leave that follow-up question? I don't know what I want to see, but I can tell you what I don't want to see is.
Yeah.
Is that what the conversation meandered that way?
Is, so ask...
Ask forty-two.
Ask forty-two.
Yep. What would you like to see in development? What would you not like to see in development?
That won't lead to what they would oppose. We'd have to ask forty-three.
Okay.
To understand if there's a major rail that they're holding on to against development.
Yeah. I'd like to see both.
I would like to see forty-two.
I think that would be very helpful.
Forty, although it's the lead-in question. It says, "Does the development cost seem well-planned?" Is there a different way to ask a lead-in question for these that says, I mean, sure is, no, it's not?
We could just simply ask them to, "How would you rate development across the city of Carver? Excellent, good, only fair for..."
There's a lot of, like, is it the size? Is it the location?
Pace, is it?
Yeah, that would like, there's a lot of do-ons there.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, a few cities ask it broad like that. Most cities, if they're going into development, they do it with forty and forty-one. So they can look at the planning portion and they can look at the pace portion.
So do we need forty then? I mean, if we're saying, we're changing topics to talk about development.
You wouldn't need forty to lead into forty-two.
Just ask forty-two and forty-three.
You just ask forty-two, forty-three.
Because I just don't know what we're going to get out of forty. Because if they say yes, they say no, okay, I mean, I don't know where, I don't know what we're going to know that one.
I'm advocating for-
Should we just take them both out since we're trying to cut?
Alright, any more, page five? Moving on to page six. Just for questions forty-five through kind of fifty-one, we got pretty specific for what houses are stereotypically for what groups. Starter homes for young families, move-up homes for families, assisted living for seniors. There are folks who aren't senior and might need assisted living or be interested in universal design in one level. So can we take that out to be more?
So-
Oh, so instead of-
So just starter homes.
Starter homes, move-up housing.
Or-
Assisted, move-up house, just move-up housing or mid-range housing? Do we need to-
Because it's, because it's for families looking for a larger home. Or so we just say for people? Is it, and then?
Or medium-sized houses? You know, like, you don't have to have a family to buy a home in Carver.
Well, he said he would take family.
Yeah, take family, they get people. So people would be for a larger home.
I don't mind yet for eighty because I think it's just enough that people go, oh, yeah, I get what you're saying. Like, alright, so.
But I'm with you on the assisted living, just should be assisted.
So just assisted living, yeah. What about one-level housing?
I'd like to take seniors out of that, too.
Yeah, just one-level housing maintained by association. I like the definition of a four-level housing.
Alright, that was my feedback for page six. Anything else? Moving on to page seven. I did not have any feedback on that one. Moving on to page eight.
We're rolling, no?
You're going to jinx us.
Yep.
I struck-
Sorry, there, there was one here ahead of me. So go back to six, you're six, sixty. Have you members of your household participated in recreational programs run by the city of Chaska? Are we looking for what they might be participating with Chaska provides here? Or going to the city of Chaska to go do? Because to me, I would like to know, since we're paying this, if you participate in something that the city of Chaska is required by their agreement, which doesn't always happen, is what into, you know what I mean, is that they're using in the city of Carver.
I think it's answered sixty-one, which ones?
I don't know. I liked where Chaska was going last year, but I don't, but, you know, if they're going up to open gym, you know, they have yoga in the park, I don't know what else they'd be planning for this year.
Could we try to get real specific for sixty-one, which ones? Yoga in the park, okay?
Where?
Because that could be in Carver or it could be in Chaska.
Okay, so, that's what I didn't understand. So Chaska offers programs for Carver residents that they-
At Chaska rates.
That take place.
At Chaska rates, at Chaska sites?
Yes.
And Carver sites.
And Carver sites.
Yes. They're supposed to have so much programming in Carver.
If they're agreed that we pay them. So I would like-
How about, how about instead of which ones, then, how about we say, do you primarily participate in the programs in the city of Carver? In the city, at a location of the city, in the city of Chaska? Or both locations equally?
I think there's so, I would prefer to know even more specifically what they're attending here so that we can give guidance to Chaska and what we want to see here. People are, twenty of us went to the yoga, you know what I mean? That's great, okay, Chaska, we've got some feedback that this is what people are looking for here. And if you just say in Chaska, or in-
It might affect the devil's advocate.
Yes.
Don't we already have that data? Like, Chaska gives us how many people signed up for these programs? So the random, the data we get from Chaska is going to be random better than a random sampling. I don't know if if we're going to, if we're going to get that data. You know, a question could be, does it matter to you? Do you want programming in Carver? Do you want, do you-
Is there a hindrance to go to Chaska?
Those are the questions we're getting out of, like, sixty-four and sixty-six.
Right.
Sixty-three, so sixty-three, they say, no, they haven't participated in programs. We're just asking why they have not participated. So they could say, I don't want to drive to Chaska, or they're not aware, whatever. Sixty-four and sixty-five is the fault, but they say, no, the current mix, what additional recreational programs could be offered? So there you'll get more, it's kind of the fishing expedition portion of it. If so which, which matters? Where they're doing it? What they're doing, or both? I think that's the-
Now, I don't know. So for, if we're looking at these questions, right? Which ones are we already, we're already getting the number of people or the, I'm sorry, I can't remember what.
We, we know what the programs are offered in Carver. We know by number, how many Carver residents are just signing up for programs at Chaska facilities and at Carver facilities? So we know that down to the registrant. So from my perspective, it's, is there value, is there value in the? This would be a more scientific way to ask, the survey that we asked the last time. Do you find value with the rate reciprocity? Do you find value in programming specific to being in Carver? Some of those types of things. I can share that survey with Peter.
So I guess when I look at now, I like, if sixty-three said, you know, okay, so we got sixty-four, does the current mix of recreational programming meet your needs? So does sixty-three then turn into, having participated in recreational programs? Maybe we don't even need to ask you, but I like sixty-four and sixty-six. So then I guess are we looking back to say that maybe mine fifty-nine? But which one, sixty-one and sixty-two?
If, if you, if you know all that information about how many people are registered, what programs are being offered in the city, I wouldn't ask sixty-one. My suggestion would be, they could be helpful to have sixty-two. What, how they rate the experience? Was it a good experience or were satisfied or dissatisfied? If, if they haven't used it, find out why not. And perhaps since we cut sixty-one, the more useful question potentially would be, if, for, to ask everybody, would you, or members of your household, be likely, more likely to take a recreational program if more variety were offered in the city of Carver? Or something along those lines? If that would be of interest, how big of a determination for your participation is the location of the program? If it's in the city of Carver, city of Chaska?
I guess we already know that, right?
But you're not going to see what the potential, you'll know what it is, but you don't necessarily know the impact and what people- I mean, say somebody's participating in one program, going to Chaska, but would participate in multiple ones if they're in the city of Carver?
We did a Survey Monkey that had probably a hundred respondents, so. We, we know the registrant data, but the other stuff is probably skewed based on the people that are responding to the survey.
Okay, now I want to give enough time for everything else that's on the agenda, so let's. Are you good, Kristy?
Can I get a?
Do you want me to add, write a question kind of about location?
Yeah, so, but we're taking out sixty-one, right? Just so I know, right? So sixty-one's gone, sixty's stained, sixty-one is gone, sixty-two is stained, sixty-three, and then we're stained from there on out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on page seven?
No.
Page?
Go ahead.
I was going to move on to page eight.
Yeah, okay, I'm like staring at it, that's why.
So I am looking at question number seventy-five. Based on your experience, how would you rate Southwest Transit? Southwest Transit does their own surveying with the year. So we, Southwest Transit, know what the riders think about that. I think that that's an unnecessary question.
Would we still ask seventy-four?
Yes.
I think there's value in that question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are they aware or not?
Keep seventy-four?
Keep seventy-four, but we can-
And then get rid of it?
Get rid of seventy-five.
What was yours?
I actually kind of like seventy-five, but no one else.
We can, like, literally, that data exists. I can get you that information.
So when I'm looking at seventy-eight, I like seventy-seven where it says, how, how much do you feel? Do you know about the work of the mayor? I know, we'll change the, the work of the mayor, I like this one. But seventy-eight, from what you know, do you approve or disapprove of the jobs the mayor and the city council are in? I don't know what that question is supposed to get to. I mean, people are mad, people are happy, but what do we?
Approval, disapproval, yeah.
Yeah, so approval rating. So to hear the president's approval rating.
First Tuesday of November.
Right.
Again, when we're looking at questions about how we're going to use them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if they're all, yep, they all hate us.
I mean, seventy-seven is valuable, right? How much, how much do you believe you know about the work, right? That is done?
Some councils are dying to know what people think.
I don't, I don't care. Can we be fine or can't? It's not because I'm afraid of the question, it's because I don't know what, what we do with the question when we get an answer.
So we feel better about?
I don't know.
I find the other questions in the section more valuable.
So strike seventy-eight, you're saying?
Seventy-seven.
Yes, seventy-eight.
So then it's seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine as well, which is the follow-up.
Okay. Okay. Moving right along, page nine.
Because I like eighty, you know, contact with staff. What do you think of city staff programs?
Yeah, I don't have any issues on questions on page nine.
Oh, sure. Put Brian's name in there.
So the paragraph, moving to page ten. The paragraph about the city newsletter. I think in there we need to specify, the city news, the city publishes a newsletter called blank, which is mailed to residents twelve times a year and is included with your utility bill. Yes, your water bill. So that it's super clear what we're talking about.
And what's, what's the name of it?
Carver Connections.
The Carver Connections.
Very highly read, pure animal.
And it's included in the utility bill.
Alright. Moving on to page eleven, okay? The social media question ninety-six. Have you used any social media such as Facebook and Twitter to receive information from the city? I would love to be able to clarify the city's page versus a community page that is not run or has no association with the city.
Oh, so, okay, so have you used any city of Carver social media such as Facebook or Twitter to receive information?
I would almost say-
No.
Okay, that's why I'm trying to-
No, 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 I don't, I just, but I want to make sure that we're defining what Facebook is. I don't know if we say the city of Carver, Minnesota government Facebook page to call out what it's called.
Not Carver Lite.
Yeah, I was going to say, do we, do we say excluding the community Carver Lite page? Because that's not-
For any of the community.
Yeah. I don't know, that could be getting too specific because then we don't know all of them either, you know?
Yeah.
I do like, yes, very much explaining the government one.
Yeah. Right. That's what I had. I don't have any other thing else. It is six fifteen and it should be moving on, on the agenda. But I think we need to address the, we have just, we're going to talk about.
Can you give us a rough?
Yeah.
Should I cut reliability of city water?
Yes. I think we're over it. We were.
Thinking that's a nine question shorter. So roughly a hundred, three, hundred, forty, uh, we've cut fifteen hundred off, so about seventeen-five, roughly, would be a ballpark? Seven, seventeen. I'll just make, say seventeen for this and if you want to cut more.
So we have fifteen in the budget for it. It's going over, right, two thousand dollars? It would come from special capital? I think that this is a worthwhile investment. You guys know that it took me a while to kind of get here to be comfortable doing a survey in the first place. I think that the research that we're doing, it's just worth it. This isn't something that we're going to do every other year. This isn't something that we've ever done before. I think we go all in because I don't see a section, you know, like, unless we questions about how you feel about city staff or the electeds, you know? I just, I think this is all worthwhile stuff. I don't see gaping.
What's the, what's the map on right now?
It's around fifty thousand, but we'll have to transfer after the twenty-nineteen audit.
And we're-
That'll be significant.
Okay, is there anything, anything big that we see right now that's going to come?
There's nothing that would impact you between now and the twenty, end of the year. I mean, it depends on what you want to use that money for. We can accommodate two thousand dollars.
I figured we could, but I'm just saying if we have something like, oh, you know what, this is just coming out, Brian has another thing.
Aaron's brilliant, Brian's being picked on.
Don't forget our thousand dollars worth of paper.
That's why I took five hundred off.
Alright, so I'm comfortable with the ninety-four-ish questions for seventeen.
Yep.
Perfect.
Well, do, Peter has another graph. We'll put it on the agenda for you to officially approve it.
Great, okay.
And then we get started. And you can, we'll have that encapsulated with a budget provision in there that you can review and consider and provide feedback on, so.
Thank you for helping explain.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for, and thank you all for sharing with us. Let's see, moving on, Jonathan Carver Parkway Improvement Project Easement Acquisition Process.
Thank you, Mary Council. So a variety of permanent temporary easements along with right-of-way will be needed, will need to be acquired in conjunction with Jonathan Carver Parkway project. That's planned to start in twenty-twenty-one. Pat Lambert with Carver County Highway will be at our work session here tonight to go over the county's engagement process for acquisitions related to the project. Project costs, including easement, right-of-way acquisition will be split using the Carver County cost share policy, which typically adds up to twenty percent for the municipality and eighty percent for the county. So with that, Pat, take it away.
I don't know where to start first. My name is Patrick Lambert, I'm a senior right-of-way agent for Carver County. And this is Zach Mann, he's our right-of-way agent. And our primarily responsibility is to acquire right-of-ways for Carver County road and bridge projects. And Jonathan Carver Parkway, of course, is County Road eleven. And where we're at right now is, I believe, it's still in the design space. It's been identified what properties- It's been identified what properties are going to have to have right-of-way acquired from them. We don't know yet how much right-of-way on each of those properties. Let me explain first is that, from what I understand, and you're gonna have to forgive me, there's only been a couple of project management team meetings on this particular project. So we're kind of in the beginning of it. But the vast majority of the acquisitions are gonna be temporary easements, which means that we have enough road right-of-way for most of the project, but we have to rent some land from property owners for the length of the project. Either for minor sloping purposes or slope matching, is usually what we say, just so it looks good when it's done. And maybe some minor staging, you know, putting materials on, that kind of thing during the process, during the project itself. You want me to run through with the... You say how it works and...
Yeah, would you mind just sharing with the council, Pat, like, how you engage with the residents to make a letter? Do you call them, that kind of thing?
Once the project is identified, or the... Once the right-of-way is identified and we know how much we need from each property owner, we send them out a... Actually, send them out two letters. And I'm gonna qualify that sending out business a little bit. There's a project coming letter and an appraiser coming letter. And typically, what we... What I like to do if there aren't a ton of parcels on a project is instead of mailing those out, and if they're mailed, they're sent certified, I like to hand deliver them. It's very important that we establish a relationship with the property owners, because this isn't easy... It's not an easy process for people. First of all, most people don't understand what it is. Most people think you're the government, you can't take what I have. Well, we can if it's for a public purpose, but we have to pay just compensation for it. And the way that's determined, then, is by an appraisal. So we hire certified appraisers to go out and appraise, or come up with an opinion of value of the areas that we're acquiring. And then after board and city approval to make these offers, then we go to the property owner and we make an offer based on that appraisal. And then the negotiations start. And we discuss things that may have been missed in the appraisal, or what they think some of the issues are that are impacting their properties that may not be readily visible to the appraiser or to us. And then once we get to a settlement, then we go back to the council and the Carver County Board to get approval for those settlements, and then we pay them, we have right-of-way. That's basically it to the nutshell. We also like to stay in contact with the property owners through the project itself, because a lot of times, they don't know... They've had contact with us, but they've never had any contact with anybody else in the project. So if they have a question or concern, I like to have them call me or Zach, so that we can get those concerns and questions taken care of. Most right-of-way agents, when you get their right-of-way acquired, or you go through condemnation, then they're done. Our attitude is, these are citizens of Carver County. We want to make sure they're treated fairly. So we make sure that we stay with that project until it is completed, so that they can... They have somebody that they know they can contact and get an answer from. I brought along the brochure that we actually were required to give out to property owners, and it kind of explains their... I don't know if I have enough of them.
Just for copies. That's perfect.
That's what we hand out to all the properties owners. It explains the process to them, and it talks about their rights and that kind of thing. Whether it's a county project that includes federal, or if it's just local funding or state funding, there's certain rules that have to be followed. If there's federal funds involved, there's more rules that have to be followed, followed, so...
So our... We designed or planned the first open house for this project to give Pat and Zach and the county team enough time to reach out to the people that would potentially be impacted, so that they don't go to the open house and then learn for the first time that they might have to give right-of-ways. So the letter would be again delivered or sent prior to March opening of the open house.
That's what I was gonna ask. Can you talk about timeline? We'll start knocking on doors on...
Well, we typically like to wait until we know for sure which properties are being impacted and how much they're being impacted. Because there's a lot of background work that has to be done. We have to give out owners and encumbrances reports, or title reports. And we have... There's a... One of the employees in the reporter's office does that for us. But I don't want to waste her time on a lot of properties that we're not gonna get right-of-way on. So we need that first, and hopefully that'll be coming in the next week or two.
Is that different than the maps that we have from WSB that you shared today?
Yeah, it is. I mean, the map is basically the design. But we don't know how much right-of-way on each of those parcels we're gonna need.
Okay. Even though it indicated which parcels have right-of-way in those maps?
And that's subject to change. We haven't seen a final draft yet, so...
Okay.
But yeah, we hope to get the... We have to... But the open house coming up, we need to get those letters out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I was gonna say, just to confirm what Brent said, you will be knocking on doors? People will be seeing the lights in your eyes before they're carreling on.
They're gonna get a phone call to set up a meeting. And if we can't find phone numbers, and... Well over sixty percent of people in Minnesota no longer have landlines. And there is no...
Should've talked to Peter. He's got a line on cell phones for everybody who's sitting there.
Well, yeah, that... It's actually becoming a big issue for us, because if we don't have their cell number, then we literally knock on their door.
Yeah. Peter's the one who's doing the survey for us, and he buys cell phone numbers.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
I should get that information. I've been paying the county for a few years.
They'll charge you for it.
Okay, good. And I appreciate what you're saying about going through and being the face of the project with these folks, because I know that you'll get calls in the same quantity and variety that we're anticipating of my electricity's out, you know, middle of the night, all that kind of stuff.
We get a lot of our project.
Appreciate it. And I... That impresses me, that, like, touch point of keeping in touch with folks, so I appreciate that. What's a rough estimate of the number of houses? Do you have?
Twenty-one total. Seven of them will be permanent easement.
Roughly.
Property, we're not... There's no houses that were...
That's not why... Okay, sorry. Properties. So twenty... I'm sorry, twenty-one total.
Twenty-one of total, and then seven of those will be permanent easement.
Okay. That's not so hysterical.
Thank you.
He's younger, he remembers these numbers better than I do.
It's very good team. Any other questions?
Is there any critical milestone or action item that you want communicated to the council as a whole as a part of this process? Because by the sole understood expectations, we wanted to bring in Pat and Zach to, like, explain the process. Then they're gonna go through it. But I'm not... Until there's, like, a formal approval, I'm not planning to bring them back or provide any other process updates, unless you're saying that you'd want to be aware of something.
Um, I don't think so. I'm just thinking of that survey crew that ended up in somebody's yard over the winter, last fall, whenever that was. If you can just let us know when you're out in the neighborhoods, we'll often hear from folks who'll come to us. Or we'll post on social media about folks knocking on their door, and just that we know for sure, oh, yeah, those were the folks from the county.
Sure.
We know them. They sent Brent an email saying that they're starting their work today. Yeah, I don't... I don't think I find what that timeline... Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, the water systems report.
Well, there have been a couple of comments on social media in the city. You've seen a couple of phone calls related to water quality. So I think a lot of you, Ryan came in and gave a report, went over the lot of calls, and so I asked Ryan if he could come in and address the current calls. And then if there's any questions that the council had, we leave it to anything, unless you're here. We provide to you the opportunity to do that, so... Ryan?
Thanks, Brent. Thanks, Mary Council. It's kind of the same format as we did about a year and a half ago. So I did include twenty eighteen that we did kind of last time. With our new water system, we're able to kind of quickly cruise through all of our work orders that we handled over the last few years that had to deal with pressure and water, and really kind of put these together. Just a quick cheat sheet for everybody to see what we've seen for problems in the last year and three months, or year, year and two months, and kind of what's going on. One of the things that we kind of go through, I'll reiterate a little bit, is that you'll see we had more pressure problems, or pressure-related type of problems that we saw coming through. And some of this had to do, and you can attribute even some of the coastal waters with the new developments, turning on and off and flushing the new mains that they're putting in lines. So every new road that we put in in the last couple of years, there's water main that's turned up. So each one of those lines we had to fill up. We had to test them for bacteria testing, and we flushed them, and we tested them again. We flushed all those lines again. So as we went through these processes, we're taking surges of water from our system, which can tend to upset our system a little bit. And sometimes you'll get... Our papers will get a little upset, and you'll see a little bit of yellow that'll come up from that. With that said, as we tested, we tested our water coming out of the water plant every day, and levels that leave our plant have not elevated. So they've been pretty consistent throughout. It's some of these upsets we're seeing is with the water mains coming on and off, service within developments.
So about this time here, and I can't remember when I emailed you that I had... There was kind of a...
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, there was kind of a blower on Facebook about that there was brown water, and we had it at that same time. So with that... I mean, with these new developments, what's going on? Is that gonna affect down here, too?
It can. It can. And once you've set it in one area, you can come through our different zones. So we can't get a plume that could migrate. It's just not something we can track. We just don't know, you know? We found a hydrant that somebody had been using a fire hydrant. We had water running down the middle of the road here about two weeks ago. And we tracked it back to somebody had a fire hydrant, didn't close it all the way, and we ended up with some problems. We were able to isolate the hydrant till spring. But if we had somebody pulling large volumes of water for doing, you know, mixing cement or whatever, that could cause some of those issues that we've seen. And again, it's, you know, and I'll kind of, you know, reiterate, as I said last time, a lot of these systems and stuff, we are finding they bypass their water softeners, their water filters, they get plumbers come in, and we never get calls back. So a lot of these really do kind of stem back to inside their house issues that we're seeing. So we're testing hardnesses, and we're seeing what's going on, and we're able to see that.
Just sort of repeat that back. So the issue is the water softener?
Sometimes when we go... Can be. It can be in the house.
Can be.
Yep.
And so when they bypass it, so they would not use a water softener anymore?
Yep. So what it is, that becomes the bottleneck within your system. So once you bypass it, you bypass that bottleneck, and the water pressures come back, or the regeneration won't happen. They have really hard water, but they won't necessarily have the yellowing.
And something can... Please can break links in there, right? Because I had brown water over at my old house, and it was because it needed a new water softener. Now, here, that's a different story, because we don't get a new one because of his move. So that's why... Just wondering, because, you know, we have these kind of intermittent days of some brown here and there.
Yep.
So... Is this... I mean, people call in, like, for me, if I hadn't seen all that kind of on Facebook, I probably wouldn't have said anything, because it'll clear up within a day. So, I mean, how often can we expect something like that?
Honestly, we don't expect it at all. So as we're seeing this happening, we ask for people to get ahold of us. And again, as much as I say, you've heard on Facebook, there's been only three calls this year. So that's what's so hard. And even one of them, we did drop off samples, containers for them, so we can see what the tests come out as. And they're not getting back to us with anything. So they're not seeing anything. So they're trying different things within their houses, and they're not able to get that representative sample back, so...
I think, too, though, like, if the water's a little bit brown, but your family has to flush the toilet or do whatever. You know, it's gonna flush through, and then by that point, it's gone. So I'm not saying that you're not fulfilling your job or doing anything right. I'm just trying to figure out how, I mean... It seems like it's really hard to capture, is what I'm getting...
Yeah, I mean, if you see it, and, you know, if it's in the toilet or in your bathtub, alls we're asking for is to take a sample of that water and grab a quick sample from an outside faucet, and that's all we're asking for. We're dropping off the bottles. You can keep them as long as you want. If it happens six months from now, you call us and say, hey, you dropped these off, we'll test it.
So what if you just grabbed something from your house at the time? Do you... Does it have to be glass? Does it have to be... Can plastic leach into it if you put it in that? Unless, you know, if you see it now, and it's Saturday, and I'm certainly not gonna call in Saturday to say, hey, come test my water. Can I scoop it out of the whatever, and...
Yeah, you can grab... You can grab a scoop of it. We just want a comparison sample on a different line. So that's usually what we ask people to do, is grab that sample, and grab one on your outside faucet, or something that's not softened. And that tells us and gives us a quick indication of what's kind of going on in your house, because most houses, everything runs through the softener. So with the exception of your outside hose bibs or your irrigation. So it gives us the ability to quickly test those two sources at the same time. One says, hey, look, we have a problem here. And the other one is, hey, this is normal, this is what comes out of our water plant. So it quickly tells us that it looks like there's something that's happening within your house without us having to spend a lot of time trying to track through your plumbing and stuff in your house. So that's why we just ask for those two samples quickly, and we're able to tell. And even after the fact, we've been in some of the places, and we just test the hardness. And people say, hey, we got a new water softener. It's not our softener, and we'll test the hardness, and they have hard water in their house, so it hasn't been softened. So you know they're having a problem with their softener, because their water's clear right then, but they still have really hard water. And they're washed up and brand new, so there's something that's not working on it, or it hadn't regenerated, or there's no salt in it, or... I mean, there's been a number of things that you can stumble across as you go through it. And sometimes a new water softeners get put in a house, and they never even turn on. They just don't go through that whole process of setting them up and putting them in the operation. But we want to know about all the issues. We want to find it. I mean, we want to figure it out. So like I said, we're kind of reaching, as we're seeing this stuff, and that's why we kept track of this. Some of these are kind of really obvious what's happening. But there are other, you know, as we kind of brainstormed in, with the new construction, the new developments. It's definitely those possibilities that we're seeing upsetting them, disturbing the system a little bit as we bring them on the line.
Like, for the disturbance, there's not a fix that's just gonna happen, is that...
Yeah, correct. Yeah. So it's not any different than in the spring when we flush hydrants, we put out the notice, hey, you're gonna see... Yellowing in the water. They're kind of doing that, but they're not fulfilling the flushing component, because we're pulling it from so many different areas that it just upsets us. So once we go through the spring this year, if we don't have a lot of development or a lot of new lines going on, we should minimize it then, at least that component of it, but...
When you say upsetting, does that mean that it's... Explain it.
So, no, it's a good question. The water actually follows a path of a certain way throughout our system. Even though all the blocks are interconnected and everything's kind of flows in a very specific pattern for a basis. Certain places use more water than others, so the water will follow just a pattern. When you open up a fire hydrant or a new line that runs off a different direction, that whole pattern changes. So the flow in one direction now goes the opposite direction. So if it had any deposits on it, it goes against those deposits and will break loose. So that's where you get it, it kind of upsets the system until the balance is restored, and then the flow kind of reestablishes.
And settles back to where...
Yeah.
That's a good explanation.
And again, if folks have yellow watering concerns, they should call.
I'll say all, and we'll get ahold of them, and we'll get them... You know, we, again, we wanna... Everybody we've talked to, when they do call, we went up there. You know, if they want us to go, a lot of times they don't. And we try and walk them through two or three different things. So once we do get ahold of people, it's been... Hopefully, they'll think it's a great experience, but we kind of walk through and kind of...
Just to clarify, this testing that you're talking about, costs residents zero dollars?
Yeah. We just... It's just iron. We just test for iron. It's typical over to an iron magnesium hardness. So it's anything we can do in households. It's not the full, you know, water quality testing of VOCs or anything like that, so...
And I haven't done it at my house? They came over, did it? My phone, oh.
Oh, you guys do it right in front?
Yeah, but a lot of times they can do it right there with the hardness and stuff. Otherwise, we'll take it and let, you know, to bring it back, so...
Any other questions?
No.
Lovely. Lovely. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, city manager's report.
Just a couple items. Fairly significant work session on March second related to the Jonathan Carver Parkway project. So there'll be three work sessions that are, we've talked about that. But the phase, the phasing of that project as it relates to the components that we're doing, so we'll have the committee's recommendations for the landscaping of the corridor and some options for the council to consider. Improvements planned for Dahlgren Road and Ironwood Drive. We've talked a little bit about the possibility of constructing a baggage road off of Dahlgren to the Public Services Fire Station. And then based on a meeting we had this afternoon, I think we'll have a pretty good estimate on what the city's cost share for the corridor, that twenty, that's what the twenty percent will be. And so we'll build that into kind of a multi-phase presentation so you can get some ideas on the components and the aspects of each of those components and then the total number and then provide staff with some feedback like, yes, this is good, no, pull this back, we don't want to do this, this one move forward. Because as we get into the spring, things are gonna start moving a little bit quicker on that project, so. And then I also wanted to bring, and I've talked to everybody on this, to look at this permanent easement concept that American Tower has proposed in the city where they can, they have a permanent easement on the forty-by-forty area along with a non-exclusive easement for their cellular tower infrastructure. So I've been working with Larry Harris on that, but I just want to bring it formally to a work session and get some feedback before we take any additional steps with American Tower. So those are two of the bigger items that are coming to your March second meeting.
Thank you. Council requests?
Do we know when the dog and the, yes, I'm sorry, it just left my head. The ordinance for pet shirts? Yes, that one.
So I have some edits back to Larry Harris. I'm making his work key and it's his birthday, by the way, today.
Is that why?
We're waiting for him here. But I'm waiting for him. I'm, I would anticipate probably March sixteenth is probably when I get to a regular meeting agenda.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to return.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson, second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion?